Good morning. I'd like to welcome those in the chamber and those listening or viewing on the Zoom link to our Board of Commissioners meeting held today, Tuesday, the 25th day of August 2020. I'm Commissioner Gage Farrar. I'll be cheering this morning. To my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey; to my left, Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We welcome all those, and we'll be having a public hearing as we move through this agenda. For those that are listening, your comments will be noted and given to us if you decide to do that on the Zoom link. So just so you're aware of that. We'll start today with a Pledge of Allegiance by Marty Smith, invocation by our own Commissioner Jim Harvey, and I'll give the thought of the day, and then we'll go to public comments. Marty?
Can I stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
as we assemble at the beginning of this commission meeting today, we're grateful, Father in Heaven, for Thy divine hand raising this country up and continuing it. We pray that there will be righteousness that prevails through the decisions today, that we, as an elected body, will be able to respect the wishes and the thoughts of those whom we represent, that we will be able to articulate carefully and with purpose. We're grateful, Father in Heaven, for those who choose to be involved, for their thoughts and their preparation, and we ask a blessing on them as well. We're grateful for our county, for those who reside in it. We pray for those, especially who are protecting our freedoms, and also who are ill, especially through this COVID. We ask a special blessing within the walls of each home, that there can be softness and sweetness that prevail there. This is our prayer. We ask, in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, my thoughts today deals with free enterprise. My question for you is, is free enterprise really free? I think that's something that we should give some thought to. So a definition of free enterprise, things that are free are unconstrained, and a business is an enterprise. So free enterprise refers to an economy where businesses are free from government control. In a free enterprise system, prices go up and down because of supply and demand, and that's the logical manner of where our country and our society are built. Free markets are really just an extension of personal freedom, which I think we all believe in, in this country. And the purpose of that free enterprise is that people benefit from their own actions. They can benefit, their families can benefit. So to give you an example, football fans can stand in line at a Dallas Cowboy or a pick your favorite team. They stand in line because they believe they'll be better off to purchase that ticket and go to the game. Well, because they do that, the owner benefits, so he can pay his players. The players benefit, so they can feed their families. And at the end of the day, everybody that participates in that free enterprise system comes out ahead. That's what it's all about. That's what this country was founded on. I believe firmly that's why we are today the country that shines above all others. Lately, here in Weber County, we've had a prime example of free enterprise. We know that those businesses that were harmed, that were hurt because of the pandemic suffered, their businesses suffered, in a lot of cases, some of those businesses did not survive. We were able just last Friday to send out about, I think it was 470 checks to our businesses. 470 businesses in Weber County received what I'm going to call a hand up, not a hand out. What we did is we gave the ability for these free enterprise businesses to survive, to prosper, to work the free enterprise system. I'm very proud of the people that put that together, even though this was a government program, and the money came from federal government sources. In my opinion, it was a government program aimed in the right direction, which was to stabilize and give these people the opportunity to survive and do what they do best, run their businesses. I received an email yesterday from one of our team members, and within that email was a number of thank you. Now, you Commissioners, you understand that we get a lot of emails in any given day, but not very often do we get a thank you. At least I don't. Maybe you do. We don't get a lot of thank yous. We get a lot of questions. We get a lot of why the heck did you do that, but not a lot of thank yous. Well, here's a difference. So these businesses that did receive these checks, let me just give you a couple of examples. Wow, thank you. You're very generous. This will make a big difference. He says, are there any restrictions to these funds? That came from a PC, an orthodontist. Thank you for all your help. This will make a difference. That came from a trophy shop. Dear Weber County Cares, thank you. This grant is really appreciated and will help me continue running my business. I am proud to be part of your community and Weber County since 2007. Thank you again. That comes from Nancy E. Goes on and on. There's a number of these. Thank you so much. This needed grant. I am forever grateful for this program and proud to be an owner in Weber County. That came from a friend of mine, Randy Higginson, Higginson Tile. So as you can see, just a number of businesses, we touched a lot of different businesses. We touched a lot of different families. I'm proud of our team that put this together, but more importantly, I'm proud of our free enterprise system and our businesses here within Weber County that continue to prosper and make us the community, make us the county and the state in which we can be proud. So that's my thought of the day, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, because I think individually, I know even through text, those were included in an email, but through text, there were several businesses. I'm really, really proud of our team, namely Scott Park, John Bond, Lanell Jensen, and Brooke Stewart, especially the focus there. We had some volunteers from outside the community. But we put a program together that if ever audited, it will stand up, and so there won't be any harm caused to these businesses for going through and having to look at their books or how they did stuff. It was a very, Commissioner Farrar, I know you led that program, and I really did a wonderful job, a great example to the state of Utah, right here in Weber County. Thanks for doing what you did.
Well, thank you for that. I really do think that we, as we look at the other counties, we're very successful. But that success goes to all of it, both of you and our team members, as we made the decision back in June, I think it was June 2nd or thereabouts, when we first came about with this. We made the decision that first day that Weber County, unlike a lot of counties and cities, would be last to the trough. That was your comment, Commissioner. And we agreed with that, that our top priority was to help these small businesses, which I still believe is our intent. And as we look for this next phase, this next tranche of money coming through, that's still our intent. We'll be fine, but we'll only be fine if we make these businesses successful. And that's what we're attempting to do. Thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins, you have any?
Just good job.
Thank you. Okay, let's move now to public comments. Anybody that coming forward now, again, keep in mind that we will be having a public hearing regarding that rezone request in Eden. You'll have an opportunity to comment, make public comments in. But Stacy, Christie, do we have any comments from the public from Zoom on, other than that? Thank you. Anybody from the audience, please come forward. Okay, going once, twice, we're done. Let's go to consent items, Commissioners. Consent item one, request for approval of warrants, 2991 through 3023 and 452108 through 452351, in the amount of $3,056,379.12, and number 451638 through 452107, in the amount of $7,337,000 even. Two, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $125,785.01. Three, requests for approval of minutes for the meeting held on August 18, 2020. Four, requests for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weber County and the following individuals, Jennifer Gaskell and Brent Christiansen. Five, requests for approval of amendments to the policy governing the distribution of CARES Act funds to small businesses under the Weber Cares Grant Program. Six, adoption of CARES Act amendment to the Weber County Corn Flexible Benefits Plan. And seven, requests from Weber County Elections for approval to surplus cubicle pieces. That's our seven consent agenda items. Commissioners, questions or comments before we go to Ricky? I guess Ricky's not here. We go to Lynn. Questions or comments? Lynn?
Thank you, Commissioner. Of the 25 purchase orders totaling almost 126,000, 27% or 33,000 went to the transfer station for emergency staffing and equipment repairs, 20% or 25,000 to the health department for vaccines, 14% or 18,000 to the library for the installation of cable, Consumer Reports database subscription, and 10% or 13,000 to the conference center for a new smoke curtain, janitorial supplies, and exit signs. We also had two check runs this time, as you mentioned, 470 checks totaling 7.3 million. That was CARES Act grants to local businesses within Weber County. The average grant amount was about 19,000. We also had 279 checks totaling 3.1 million. The largest of these, 25% or 769,000, was for employee medical insurance. 15%, 450,000 was a ramp award to Weber State for 2019 major award, and 13% or 408,000 was for transportation funds for work in West Haven and Hooper. Everything else was less than 10%.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Now that I entertain a motion.
Chair Farrar, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent items as read.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Commissioner Jenkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Consent agenda items are approved. Let's go to action items.
You know, that's a lot of money we put through this operation.
That's a lot of money, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of money. And hopefully, it'll do a good job with these businesses.
I agree.
Commissioners, can I interrupt for just a minute?
Shelley Hollissey.
That's Shelley.
Go ahead.
Would you kindly announce that someone is sharing their screen? I'm not able to tell who it is, but we're not able to see you. We're seeing someone go through their emails.
So we need to tell the people on Zoom to not share their screen? Is that what? Is that what I'm hearing, Shelley?
Thank you. They went out.
Okay, so we're okay now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and just so everybody's clear, if they've looked at the consent items, that 7,337,000, that is the CARES Act funding amount that I discussed earlier in my comments. So that wasn't taxpayer dollars. That was federal cares from the CRF funds from the federal agency. Okay, action items. G1, bee inspection report and request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Rex Weston for bee inspection services. That's not Cody, but we'll recognize Mr. Marty Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cody's here. I think it says, again, Cody, you're presenting. This is for bee inspection services in the county, this contract. We coordinate this through the USU Extension Office. The former contract was 10 years. We decided that term was a little long, and we worked with Matt Wilson, thank you to him, in the attorney's office to shorten this contract through 2022 with two one-year options to renew. So this new contract is for that with Rex Weston, $2,168 a year. It's important to note that this, although billed as a line item to us, this is included in our contribution to USU Extension Services for our yearly contribution. And Cody Zessiger is here to explain the program to you, if you would like him to come over and explain what we get for bee inspection services.
Be great. I don't see, there he is. Didn't recognize him with his mask on.
Well, I tried to use the branding right here, but...
Welcome, Cody. Cody's also, just so everybody's aware, the chair of our established weed board that was established this year, and he does a great job running that board. Cody, welcome.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share a few numbers with you, kind of on how many beekeepers we have in the county, as well as my own personal experiences with Rex in the capacity of, kind of when I was evaluating his ability to educate and help apiarists. So first off, I just want to say that there currently, well, as of May, and there may be more since then, there are 117 registered apiaries or separate beekeeping operations in the county. In addition to that, there are probably about 1,200 migratory hives. That's where we truck in hives from California or somewhere else to support agricultural operations. And that's a really important service that people do to help our farmers out on the west side produce their pumpkins and melons and squashes and even tomatoes and peppers, those crops that need to be pollinated by an insect. We certainly can't go out and do that by hand. And that's the main reason why we have a bee inspection program, and it's for bee health. You've probably heard in the headlines over the last few years that some people are panicking about bee health and bee populations collapsing, and there's some truth to that. Bees are facing a number of different pathogens that can make them sick and destroy the colony, and a lot of commercial beekeepers and hobbyist beekeepers have been dealing with this for a number of years. In addition to that, the apiary inspection programs, one of the oldest programs in the state of Utah, it's over 100 years old, and so we're just continuing that tradition. But I just wanted to move on in the last minute or so and just talk a little bit about my experiences with Rex Weston. So Rex Weston has been keeping bees for over 10 years. He has over 30 hives. He's done it both for breeding quality bee stock for people, but as well as producing his own honey. And so I'm a new beekeeper. I didn't grow up keeping bees, and when I was in college, my wife and I, we lived in an apartment because we were on a tight purse, and so we didn't have bees. But after I got this job, I thought that's something that I'd want to be able to help people out with. And so I bought some bees, and I didn't really know what I was doing, and I did as much research as I could. But, you know, it can be intimidating getting into a hive where there's 50,000 ladies that are worried you're going to steal from them and hurt their babies, right? And so, you know, I was a little intimidated by the whole process. And so I called Rex up after we had talked, and I said, you know what? I just kind of want to see what you can do for the average beekeeper, especially the novice beekeeper like me. So he came over to my house, and he's like, man, you got a lot of bees. And yeah, you split your hives, but you didn't quite do it right. Let me teach you. And he kind of handheld me and worked me along. He actually helped me produce brand-new queens for my new hives that I had built, and we inspected them and made sure that they'd be sanitary and they wouldn't get a lot of the pathogens that the bees can get. And then he said, well, now based off of what we've done, you're not even going to have mites, which are a parasite that actually carries a virus that can cause colony collapses. It's maybe the number one issue that honeybees are facing right now. And it was just a really positive experience, and I can see him having a positive impact with a lot of our residents. It's also important to note that we have several stores that sell beekeeping supplies, and they seem to be doing really well with it. Every time I go to get stuff, the shelves are empty. They can't keep it in fast enough. And we do have one retailer in Ogden that specializes specifically in beekeeping supplies. So the demand for the hobby and commercial applications are pretty significant here in the county, but also that just reminds us that we need to make sure that we're having healthy bee populations, just because of all of the industries that it affects, and that's the purpose of this program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's the end of my spiel.
Thanks, Cody. That's great information. Questions, Commissioners?
A question I have, Cody, is how long's Rex been with doing this?
So he hasn't done it previously. We had a previous bee inspector.
So he's new to this.
Yeah, so he's new. And so I got together with him and with the state bee inspectors, and they said they'd mentor him for a year to make sure that he understands.
I know Rex. I've known him all his life, and he's a couple of years younger than you.
Is he?
Yeah. So if you look in your senior yearbook, he'd be a sophomore.
I'll look for him.
You know, it's interesting. I've been involved indirectly with bees for a long time. When I was over the Natural Resources Committee down there, we did some looking into hive collapse and what's happening and in that whole thing. The Bachmans, Mike Bachman and his son decided to get into the retail bee business, and they're the ones that operate that little shop on Washington down there. And they've had a pretty successful business going, I think. Anyway, I have to agree. It's fun having bees around if you don't fight them and just enjoy them. We were involved, we had a guy come into our shop several years ago from Montana. It was unusual that he would come all the way to Ogden, Utah to get supplies, but it was some special stuff that we had, and he had some family in the area, and he ended up coming into our place for supplies. And he had a large operation up there, and man, it was three or four thousand hives he had. And it's like, wow, what do you do with these? And he says, well, he says, every spring, we pack them all up and send them to California to the almond orchards out there. And I says, that guy, I says, so they'll pay you to do that? He goes, oh, yeah. He says, when we're out there, he says, we increase. He says, we'll double the number of almonds that get off those trees. So he says, it's well worth their money to pay us to do that. And then he says, we pick them up, and after we get them out of there, we'll take them somewhere else. And then later in the year, they take them up into Montana into the wildflowers and the natural areas up there. And I says, well, where do you, that's a lot of honey. Where do you sell all that honey? And they sold it to the Millers, I think it was, up in, I think in Cash Valley. They have a big honey operation.
Do they do the Cox honey operation, or is that a separate one?
No, it was a separate one. This is a large commercial one that they went to. Anyway, he talked about the honey that came, that is imported into our area from overseas, and how they, some of the growers will divide that honey, and so it's not as pure as the honey we get local. And it's just, there's quite a, there's quite a analysis and a science that goes with this, especially when you get at the level that these guys are at, where you're producing thousands of gallons of honey. And, you know, it's worth a fair amount, and you have to be very careful of the kind of honey you get. So guys like Rex and Utah State doing what you're doing is greatly appreciated, and I want you to know that. As a hobby farmer, I was out Sunday, kind of looking at my raspberries. They're coming on really good right now, and they're just loaded with bees. And I thought to myself, man, whoever's hives these are, their honey's going to be tasting like raspberries. Anyway, it's really good.
So Cody, I appreciate this.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Cody. One question for you. So how is our population of bees in this area? Because the reason I ask you that is I remember, I think it was at a legislative hearing a few years back, they talked about UDOT and spraying, you know, along the roadsides with certain sprays that was not good for the bees. It would kill the bees. So do we still have concerns that way, or?
Somewhat. I think we've got some pretty good measures in place with, you know, our county and how we're spraying, both with our mosquito abatement district as well as with BART. I think there was controversy back in 2016 about somebody complaining that the mosquito abatement district had killed their hives or damaged them, and UDOT came out and investigated, and it seemed like that wasn't the case. So pesticides can be an issue, but those tend to be a little bit bigger of an issue for our native bee populations, which Utah has over 1,000 different native bee species, and they're incredibly important, especially in our orchards and our early fruit production, as well as just for maintaining our environment out here and maintaining those beautiful recreational opportunities that we have. And so those bees are actually affected too by some of the conditions that can be in our honeybees. So it can be a concern, but I think the biggest concern is maintaining sanitary hives and giving people the confidence to actually get in and inspect their own hives.
Great. Thank you. Additional questions?
You know, that's one of the reasons that mosquito abatement sprays at night is to protect the bees, because they're back in their hives.
That's what I've heard.
And that's one of the other important things that Rex will be doing, is he'll be encouraging unregistered beekeepers to get registered. And once they're registered, then the mosquito abatement district knows that, you know, that those hives are present, and they can skip 200 yards or something like that.
Oh, good to know.
We can help with that too, with our messaging.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
It's good to know.
You know, I have, these hobby beekeepers, most of them don't register, and you just really never know. And my brother, he had a couple of hives there in the back of the house, and they were just over in the corner behind some trees. You didn't even notice that they were there. They were really pretty cool. And one day, come out, and all them bees were gone. They literally just left, all of them. And it's like, oh, my gosh, where'd they go? Well, a day or two later, the neighbor come over and said, man, have you seen the van on my house? And he says, no. He says, well, look at it up there. It was just loaded with bees. And they started building, and sure enough, those things had left and gone over there. And who knows why? I mean, there's lots of reasons bees leave. And anyway, it was really funny. So he had to hire a professional to come and take those bees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's...
And that's another thing that we do with the Extension Office, is we actually have a list of qualified beekeepers and inspectors on there as well, too. So when people do get swarmed, they don't have to pay somebody to come and remove. They can get it removed for free.
There you go. Thank you. Thanks, Cody. We appreciate you. We appreciate very much the connection we have with USU, the Extension. You guys are valuable services to many aspects in our county here, Cody, USU Extension. Thank you very much. With that, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve item G1, that places Rex Weston as the county beekeeper.
Thank you. We have a motion.
And inspector.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Let's go to two, request for approval of a $36,873.60 donation of Prop 1 funds to the Trails Foundation of Northern Utah for asphalt maintenance on the Pineview Loop Trail. Mr. Sean Wilkinson, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the fifth donation request this year from the initial $200,000 that was budgeted for pathway maintenance, and this would be for asphalt repairs and maintenance on sections of the trail at 2200 North, 5500 East, and 1900 North. Again, this request is $36,873. This, again, this request is $36,873.60 and the remaining funds uh, from that initial $200,000 after all of the donations is $77,396.40 for the rest of the year.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
You know, uh, Chair Forre, the uh, Trails Foundation have done a great job. And I'm really proud of them and what they've done. And uh, this area that they want this uh, additional money for has to do with uh, Pineview and erosion and everything that's happened up there and the heavy uses. So I'm very supportive of that and I'd make that motion that we approve this.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second?
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes mo- motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Sean. Yeah, I would agree, Commissioner. Uh, the trail, and we talk about trails a lot here. Trails Foundation has done a great job. We talked yesterday about uh, the trails and the future of North Fork Park and what they've done up there. And quite frankly, it's uh, I think we're going to continue to see that heavy use and it's a, it's a resource for our citizens here in the county that uh, is a resource well spent. So appreciate that. I've been asked to hold Agenda Item 3 because Mr. Yulberry is not with us today. Uh, we'll hold that. So we'll go to Agenda Item 4, Request for Approval of an Interlocal Agreement by and between Weber County and the state of Utah for the Weber County Sheriff's Office to supply security to the admin office of the courts building and Bailey Services, bailiff services at the Ogden Second District Courthouse and the Second District Juvenile Courthouse. Mr. Marigoni?
Yes, sir. Okay, this is a, gosh, sorry. This is a contract between the Weber County Sheriff's Office and the Utah State. Utah.
State of Utah?
State of, state of Utah uh, um, court. Uh, this is an annual contract. We're statutorily required to maintain security at both courthouses, the District Courthouse and the Juvenile Courthouse. Uh, and then they pay a portion of what we, what we do. We, we end up subsidizing them a bit. Um, I had my numbers, but it won't pull up exactly what we're subsidizing. Their, their pay to us is $738,372 for the fiscal year 2021. That's for coverage from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. We're a little late on this contract. I just got moved over and found out we had to renew the contract. My rough estimate is we're probably spending about $1.1 million for security over there.
In total or subsidized?
In total. So we're subsidizing around $400,000 uh, for the security over there.
Okay, commissioners, has that always been a subsidy? And I guess the question is who, who negotiates that contract with the state? Cause that, that is a state operation.
You bet. It is a state operation. I don't know who's, who who negotiates that. From what I understand, it's a legislative item that uh, they uh, they give some money to uh, the different counties and it's uh, it's split up like most of the things that we do with the county or with this, with the state of Utah.
Hey, you know, Commissioner Forre, uh, now take, put the other hat on, Representative Forre. When we were uh, down there, I remember when we argued to uh, uh, made an effort to get that Second District Court funded up here and put the new building up and I had no idea that we were subsidizing this to that level. I, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Didn't either.
Help me understand why it costs Weber County taxpayers money to have a state court in their county. It would be cheaper if we moved the court somewhere else, at least for our taxpayers. I don't understand that.
I don't understand that either, gentlemen.
That's something we have to dig into.
Yeah, that's, it sounds a lot like jail reimbursement to me.
Well, that's, that's another, that's another hot topic. Jail reimbursement is one of those same things that's negotiated and um, we end up subsidizing some, so.
Well, obviously, this is, you know, above and beyond your control, but I I appreciate you bringing that up because commissioners, I think
We need to make that an action.
This needs to be an action item this year at the legislature.
I agree.
You know, because as we fund, well, I was involved with funding the new juvenile courthouse uh, through my committee down there and we'd looked at programming and uh, as I recall back then, the courts made at least the comment that uh, that the county and the city would uh, not only be held whole, that they would actually make money from that operation. And what I see here is the county's probably not being made whole.
Well, this is that very building.
Yeah, well, it's for both, this is for both the juvenile and the Second District Court.
Correct. It's all wrapped, yeah, all wrapped up into one. And the contract you guys have in front of you does have the hours that they're paying us. So they pay us for the certain allotted hours for perimeter security and then a certain allotted hours for bailiff time. We're just putting much more into both of those categories, being that we're having as many court hearings as we are and as many judges as we're bailiffing. Uh, currently with the COVID, we're, we've moved a lot of operations over to our uh, jail uh, video court and we've just dropped that system to the max. We're well over capacity doing uh, video court hearings from the, from the jail currently. But we're able to move some of our, some of our staff over there to uh, assist with the video court operations it right now. But with that, we still have to maintain security at the courthouse, although we're not holding in-person court hearings over there. Part of, part of uh, the deal. We can't just close the the doors over there and lock people out. Now with that, there are people still coming in and and uh, doing business at the courthouses with with the clerks that are over there getting information on how to do their uh, hearings via video court. And we've been in good discussion with the judges, with the presiding judge, uh, Judge Dorita. He's been fantastic on helping us get into those uh, uh, video court hearings and and understands the stress that we're under on uh, uh, continuing those. But uh, we're doing everything we can with what we've got and uh, that's, that's where we're at.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, this is good information. We need, this is something that we need to to deal with, but I am, you know, I have conversations with the sheriff two or three times a week and understand the needs that he has, we all do on additional personnel. And that roughly $400,000 could go a long ways toward personnel that would solve a lot of our problems and deal with our issues here in Weber County, commissioners, so.
Absolutely. And I I had a spreadsheet. I'd be more than happy to email it to you guys as soon as I get it. It won't pull up on my phone for some reason, but I can email you that spreadsheet. It's got a breakdown of what we're putting into it, uh, what we're charging and um, of course, what we're doing.
If you wouldn't mind giving that to us, it, this is probably something that's worthy of bringing up at an interim meeting, Commissioner Senator, so.
Commissioner Forre, I've got your email. Is it okay if I send it to you and you you disperse it?
That'd be fine. That'd be fine. No, just send it to me and I'll make sure everybody, the other two get it.
Sounds good. I I will send that to you. Uh, I want to get to a computer in a couple hours.
Okay, additional comments, questions? Commissioner Harvey?
No, I mean, we're kind of, this is actually a ratification.
Yeah.
Uh, from what you've said, so uh, I don't like these ones that were painted into the corner, but I I guarantee you, we'll, knowing this commission, we'll we'll, we'll make that an action item and at least figure that out. You know, not everything you do down at the state. I let you guys finish.
Yeah, thank you for finding this out.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between Weber County and the state of Utah so that we can have uh, bailiffs at the courthouse.
Thank you.
And the juvenile courthouse.
Thank you very much for that motion. Do we have a second?
You do. Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate you being here. All right, uh, commissioners, it's time to go to our public hearing, H1. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our public meeting and convene as a public hearing.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in a public hearing adjourned from a public meeting. Mr. Charlie Ewart will give us the information on to consider or take action on a proposal to rezone approximately 15 acres of land located at 4706 East, 2650 North from AV3 to either MV1 or CV2. Mr. Ewart, go ahead. Time's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give me just a moment to get a presentation pulled up here. Thank you. Thanks for uh, considering this item. So I wanted to uh, just kind of set the groundwork uh, first off and then let you guys make what decisions you choose to make from from there on. Um, the, this is an applicant-driven proposal, but it also has several other components to it. And when it comes time to make a decision, we're probably going to ask you to make a couple of different decisions if you're comfortable doing so. Uh, the applicant is requesting about a four and a half or so acre rezone of property that he owns at the end of Clark Lane in uh, the Eden Town Village, uh, which is just adjacent to the county road shed uh, to the north of that and right adjacent to the North Fork of the uh, the Ogden River. Um, just to the south of that is the um, uh, county road shed and just to the um, east of the property are uh, three, well, two residential uh, pro- uh, properties. Uh, there's three houses there. One of them is actually the applicant's house, so. Um, the request at hand is to change the zone of the property so that they can do uh, storage units there. They want to uh, do kind of a higher-end um, storage facility for recreational vehicles, for uh, boats. Um, and uh, they'll probably use it for um, household storage goods for the people who live up the uh, the valley as well. There's a big need for storage. We get calls about storage units uh, on a regular basis. In fact, I had somebody in the office just a couple of weeks ago, uh, just up the hill from here, talking about uh, wanting to do a storage unit on their property. Um, also zoned, uh, CV2 right up the hill. Um, this shows uh, MV1 or CV1, that should be CV2, pardon me for that mistake there. Uh, the MV1 zone allows for storage units and so does the CV2 zone. CV2 zone allows it by conditional use permit. MV1 allows it by right. There are other items that are allowed in the MV1 zone.
Could you say that again, what you just said?
Sure. So uh, the CV2 zone allows uh, for a uh, uh, storage unit facility uh, by conditional use permit. So you have to come back to the planning commission after site plan review and everything.
Versus a CV1 that would allow it without a conditional?
MV1 would allow it without uh, conditional use. So just a, just as, by right essentially.
Very good.
The MV1 zone also has a lot of other uses that are allowed there. Uses that wouldn't necessarily be compatible with what um, is currently in that area or what may be desirable by the public or by the general plan to occur in that area. Um, CV2 zone likewise has a lot of uses that we just can't predict all of the outcomes that might come from rezoning the property to either of those without any kind of a, a other limitation that would would go with it. Fortunately for us, we have an applicant that is just asking for storage units and has a site plan put together and has considered a lot of, a lot of mitigation uh, in in doing so already. Uh, the applicant actually came to us a little over a year ago and asked for uh, the, the, the right to run a gravel operation and a concrete batching plant right there, uh, with a, a rezone to the gravel zone. Um, and that was uh, that was denied. Uh, there was a lot of impact that could have happened from that. You got a uh, recommendation from staff and the planning commission for denial of that one. Uh, but after further discussion over the last year with the applicant on what could be, uh, what could occur, applicant had a lot of different ideas, um, anywhere from uh, uh, rooftops to help support the economics uh, of uh, emerging village there in the Eden area. Um, to the possibility of um, maybe citing a sanitation facility or sewage facility. Uh, at the end of the day, as we were looking at the property, we realized it's in this bowl, it's really hard to see from most, if not almost all locations except for a couple of the houses right up the hill. Um, it may be good for a use that tends to be a little bit unsightly, if not otherwise managed or mitigated well. Um, and RV, or excuse me, storage units for recreational vehicles has just been something that we've been, uh, it's been a location we've been looking for uh, in the valley for quite some time. Uh, you put it along any of the uh, corridors or the highway corridors or whatever. Um, you, you're gonna have to put some really good design standards on them, uh, otherwise it is going to be the announcement uh, or the gateway for your community, your resort-oriented, recreation-oriented community. And your, your gateway would be storage units, which you can kind of see how that looks already as you kind of head into Huntsville. Um, that could be a little challenging. So we got three different things that we're looking at here. As I mentioned, we've got the applicant's request for the uh, storage unit rezone. Um, we've got the county road shed, which is currently operating like a manufacturing property. Uh, it's probably better to rezone it from AV3 as it is today, uh, which it is operating lawfully within the bounds of the AV3 zone. A public storage facility uh, operated by a public entity is allowed. Probably better off rezoning that to what we're using it for now as uh, manufacturing or industrial uh, oriented. Um, and then uh, the, there are the two uh, residential properties across the street from that, which we would want to consider what to do uh, with those properties. I've spoken with those landowners and they are more than comfortable with the county rezoning their property to the CV2 zone. And I'll show you kind of what that looks like here. So you see the, the red polygon is about the four and a half or so acres uh, that the applicant owns uh, and is asking for storage unit on, units on. The really dark blue slash, I don't know if that's purple or not, uh, just to the south of that is the county road sheds. Um, we've got uh, refueling station there. We've got uh, uh, stockpiling of uh, uh, goods and equipment we need for operation of those, uh, of the roads up in the Ogden Valley. And then just adjacent to the east or to the right, you can see in a kind of that lighter blue, uh, there are two residences. And both of those residential, uh, or both of the property owners of those residences are comfortable going to the CV2 zone. They'd prefer if they were to rezone to anything would be CV2. There's no application to rezone those two residences to CV2 or to anything. Uh, but we are changing some of the zones in the area. And if you look, um, they would be flanked on all sides by either a commercial or manufacturing zone, depending on what we did with the applicant's property. And then just to the north, you've got school property. Um, and so they'd just kind of be the last two residential properties on the street um, before you enter into either a commercial or a manufacturing area. So these, this is your current zoning. This is also your do-nothing alternative if you're looking for uh, options or alternatives. Uh, this would be if you just deny the application or the rezones uh, uh, on their face today. This generally would be what the, the rezones would look like if you uh, rezoned the property to the MV1 zone but kept those residences to the CV2. See those residences again right here, applicant's property here, county property here. Uh, so that's uh, that's one alternative that we're uh, asking you to look at. And the other alternative is just to take essentially uh, keep the county property uh, to the MV1 zone and then just change the applicant's property to the CV2 zone. At the end of the day, it isn't going to matter. If you have a development agreement that tells the applicant, all right, you can do storage units on your property. That's what we're extending the, the zoning rights for. Um, you could do either of the two zones. When staff recommended uh, uh, an option to the uh, planning commission, our preferred alternative was to go with the MV1 zone. And the reason for that is because we're not quite sure where the CV2 zone is going to go as it grows up into the future. We're, we're looking at uh, new village zones and new village areas. And CV2 might go away. And so if we rezone more to the CV2 zone, it just kind of complicates that. And how do we do grandfathering rights and stuff like that? However, it may be a worthwhile compromise to make in in this kind of situation. Um, kind of hard to see here, but uh, this is the uh, commercial locations and village areas map uh, from the general plan. If you were to squint your eyes and look really deep, you could see uh, we're talking about this polygon right in here and just kind of extending it with a little tail that kind of goes up in that direction. Uh, on that side, there is a recommendation for this area generally to become a commercial village. Um, or to continue to become a commercial village as we move into the future here. Um, those circles, they're not intended to be urban growth boundaries or anything like that. It's, that's just a quarter mile radius from the, where we considered to be the intersection or the, the, the center of that village. Um, at the time we made the plan, it may or may not be, you know, a hundred percent accurate on where the actual village center is. The applicant has proposed to us this general site layout. Um, this gives you the site layout. It also gives you a landscape plan. What you'll see on this landscape plan is on the perimeter of the site, so this um, right here, you can kind of see from these lines in here. This area here is a steep hillside that goes up and there's a canal that sits on top of that. And on the other side of the canal is the school. Yep. Um, so you're down in a bowl, uh, you've got the school, you've got the canal, and then it drops down this hill. And then you're in a bowl where it's, it's And then you're in a bowl where it's pretty hard to see what's going on down here. They are proposing to preserve as much as the native prison, preserve as much of the vegetation as they can, the native vegetation in this area as they can. And anything they have to move up on this hillside, they'll reseed and replant. As you, as you come around in this area down here, this is where, let's see if I can see my mouse here. This is essentially part of the Riparian Corridor of the North Fork. So if you could see where the North Fork River is, it basically is in the blank spot at the bottom of the screen. So just to the, that's actually west, down is west on this map. You can see as you look in the middle, you've got, you've got three larger storage buildings. The applicant is proposing to make them look agriculture and nature, kind of like large barns. They're kind of surrounded in a barnyard-esque type of feel, which is where you get these facilities here. These buildings here will probably be pull-through for the RVs, as you could see from just the X's on the sides. That's representative of a door.
Have they left enough room on the bottom side of this? So if there ever is a trail along the river there that that trail has room to go through?
There will be. In fact, we're, we're gonna get, I'm gonna show you that in just a moment.
Okay, I'm ahead of you, sorry.
Yeah, as we get going through. Or I'll explain it in just a moment. So the picture you see here is not what they're proposing. It's kind of an example of what we kind of want to help avoid. And this is just a dime a dozen when it comes to storage unit facilities. Storage unit facilities tend to be kind of a cash cow for an owner. You throw it up, split-faced CMU or pole building or whatever, and then you walk away and it just kind of makes money. And then every once in a while, you gotta go over there and take care of the weeds when the county weeds enforcement officer gets on your case. They are not proposing, as with many storage unit facilities, they're not proposing to have anyone onsite. There's not going to be any restrooms. There's not going to be a need for wastewater treatment or culinary water or anything like that. It's going to be essentially self-operated. And so as we look at these types of uses elsewhere, we just ask ourselves, how do we help them fit better? There was one particular planning commissioner who said, well, we already said it's down in a bowl where nobody can see it. So maybe it doesn't really matter what design standards we apply. It's a reasonable response. I mean, at some point in time, there's probably going to be a county road that cuts across Clark Lane. Where Clark Lane is cuts across the river and opens up some development on that bench on the other side. And if you've walked the property or looked at the property, there's probably a reasonable amount of development that could occur in the next 100 years or so on that side. So I would assume we'd see a bridge and some development over there. And I would assume these storage units aren't going to be torn down right away if the market works for them there.
Charlie?
Sure.
Sorry, are you calling Clark Lane 26 east, 2650 north?
Yes, thank you.
That's what's GeoGizmo showing and so I'm just trying to make sure that I'm staying with you.
Yeah, thank you. Clark Lane and 2650 north.
Can you go back and show that to us on the map?
You bet.
Yeah, right?
Here, let me come back just a little bit. So this is Highway 162, County Road 162. This is Clark Lane as it comes in through here. So.
That's why I understood it. So thanks. You've made it clear.
These are images taken directly out of the Ogden Valley General Plan as we worked with the public back in 2016 to talk about design standards. One of the main themes that came out of that was that the county should adopt some kind of design standards to help guide how buildings should look in these commercial areas. The center three horizontal images you'll see are categorized as agrarian. The idea behind that, and it's not written on its face in the plan, this is just kind of where staff are hedging and commissioners, you tell us if we're getting it right. The idea behind this is that the newer area of Eden at the four-way where the grocery store is and where this would become a part of would be kind of a little more of that agrarian feel in terms of design. Old Town Eden, where the park is just down the road on the other side, would be a little more old west mining. And we're already seeing mountain rustic going on on top of the hills, on top of the mountains with those ski resorts. So we'd recommend just sticking with the agrarian design standards. As we just went and polled what looks nice, you know, what would make a quality design, we're looking at just agrarian architecture. You see on the bottom left-hand side, you've got fairly shallow roofs. You've got some trim. You know, it just kind of tips the hat at the agrarian feel. And that's not a super expensive building to build there. The other buildings may be a little more expensive as you get into them. And so how strict we want to be with these design standards is completely up to you guys on how we ultimately craft that development agreement. If you look at the wall you see here, that's a split-faced CMU wall, but it's been textured essentially, or it's been, you can roll those split-faced CMUs to actually give them the effect of stone. And actually, excuse me, that one's not split-faced. That was actually pre-cast. It's a pre-cast concrete wall that can be colored an earth tone to fit in well. The applicant has agreed to provide some kind of an eight-foot visual barrier between the two residential buildings that are there right now and the facility. This is one of those two. The other one is an eight-foot berm with trees on top of it. Eight-foot berms are pretty intensive when it comes to the amount of land it takes to build them. And so they wanted an option to do one of the other, basically at their, at their option. If they did the berm, we would require trees, evergreens and deciduous to kind of help shield the view of the facility on the inside. The biggest concern we have is just what does it look like as you're passing from the outside or looking at it from the houses on top of the hill? Couple of things that the planning commission, well, one primary concern the planning commission had, that we just didn't have all the evidence on, we didn't have all the science on, was invasive aquatic species. If somebody accidentally brings their boat to the site and they've got water from an infested body of water that has an issue with the quagga mussel or the zebra mussel, what's the possibility that it gets into the river that's adjacent to the property and gets into the lake? We've actually had a lot of really good conversations with the state. In fact, commissioners in a work session, I believe we spoke directly with the gentleman that officiates over that invasive species program. And he told us very directly that he is not concerned with the site. His primary recommendation is that any kind of drainage facility we do onsite, catch the water and just guide the water to a storage facility that's away from the rivers until it evaporates. And that'll dry the mussels out and it'll kill them before they can go anywhere. In working with the applicant, we're asking them to go even a step further. If you guys are comfortable asking the same and providing essentially by that front entrance, just a clean-out area, hopefully it never get used because if everyone follows the law, they're not, they're going to be bringing dry and decontaminated boats to the property. But if for some reason somebody says, shoot, I forgot, there's still some water in the ballast, they'd be able to pull the plug right there on the hard service area and everything would be contained right there. We're also asking the applicant to post signs right at the entrance that says, do not bring your wet, decontaminated boats to the site and store them here. We're also asking them to post a sign that says, do not bring your RVs full of effluent and leave them here. So drain them before you bring them, basically. And just have that be a rule of the project written into their contracts as well with each of their clients. The planning commission recommended denial. Two of the three, so a three-to-two vote, it was a split vote. Two of the three were really concerned about the quagga mussel issue. I have had dialogue with those two who mentioned that if they had evidence to show that it wasn't an issue, their vote would probably have been different on this item. And then from a staff perspective, we recommended approval to the planning commission of the rezone based on some pretty strict findings, including not just design standards to make it look good, but also working with DWR on quagga mussel issues. If there was one, finding out there aren't, isn't as much of an issue on that, as well as working with Eden Waterworks on their wellhead protection area. We did have a discussion with Eden Waterworks. There is, part of the property is in Zone Four of a well that's right adjacent. Eden Waterworks was actually pretty pleased because a use like this is not as intensive in terms of contamination sources as houses would be in that area, for example, or other types of uses that could potentially bring in contamination sources. But if you get a good drainage system that has a, an oil grit separator before any of that storm drain water is allowed to exit the site, you're going to be fine, essentially. Couple of other really brief points I wanted to hit on with you. So today, we're not asking for you, if you're comfortable voting for approval of the rezone, we're not asking for you to vote for that approval today. We would ask you to table it to a date certain into the future. I would, I would recommend two weeks from today. We're still working with the applicant on finalizing development agreement standards. This would be a great time for you guys to give myself and the applicant some direction on how, you know, how strict you want to see those standards or how loose. I've already got a pretty good development agreement put together, but some of the finer details of whether or not you want trim a certain way or colors a certain way or whatever are still kind of up in the open. When it comes to the trail corridor, the applicant has already told us that they're more than willing to secure a corridor. At this time, it doesn't make a lot of sense to ask for it to be built because it's not going to go anywhere, but at least we'll have a right-of-way to have that trail corridor. And if you can imagine for right now, we would have Clark Lane essentially going to the bridge that isn't a public bridge right now. And then if that trail could be built, it would head to the north. And then we've got a couple of other property owners to work with if they're willing, at the time that they're willing, to get a trail running along the river going to River Drive. We've already got it in our plan to pick a trail up from River Drive, which is going to be a paved pathway adjacent to essentially River Drive, going all the way up to essentially the road that goes up to North Ogden Divide. The north coordinate is escaping me. Once you hit that, you're at North Ogden Divide, you're essentially connecting Liberty Park down to Eden Park over to Huntsville Park, which we now have a new connection over to the seven-acre parcel at the base of Trapper's Loop Road, which is the Snow Basin, preserved as a park that Snow Basin has set aside for us. So four parks all connected together. And then our long shot after that would be getting up to North Fork Park and it'd just be park to park to park to park and great, great recreation opportunity. Okay, so just, just so I can touch on these things, so you guys kind of have your understanding of what kind of items we're working on with the developer in the development agreement. Let me, let me just briefly mention these items here. Let's see. So you guys know that the intersection from Highway 162 going to Clark Lane, it's kind of got a weird angle to it right now. There's a sidewalk and a crosswalk that's probably, I don't know, 50 to 100 feet down Clark Lane to give people or the students access from the junior high to the seminary facility just on the other side. And so we kind of got some weird configuration there. Right now, county roads, trucks are using it as it is without huge complaint. If we've got a lot of big vehicles with a lot of trailers coming back and forth, there may be a need for some improvements. Right now, we've got a statement from a traffic engineer that the applicant has paid for that suggests that it's not that big of a deal right now. But our engineering team has said, maybe we get into a development agreement, some provision that says we want a traffic study at certain intervals or increments. So we know at what point your traffic is creating a demand for reconfiguration of this intersection. The applicant is comfortable with that. I mean, they want to make sure that they're paying their fair share. They don't, you know, they fairly enough probably don't want to pay more than their fair share on this. When it comes to reconfiguration, we're going to have to work with the school district to get some property. They've already reached out to the school district, started that dialogue. And so far, it seems like the school district is happy to have that conversation to reconfigure that intersection to a better four-way or at least a three-way intersection. Clark Lane, we frankly don't have a lot of evidence to suggest how Clark Lane has been built, like what, to what construction standards it's been built. So the engineering team, they've asked for the applicant to kind of pothole in a few locations down that road to see if it's built to a standard. If it's built to a reasonable standard, then leave it as it is.
Hold on. Is the county's engineering team asking that?
Yeah, yeah. And it's obviously something we could take off the list if you'd like to do so. Just making sure that whatever additional impact comes from the roads or the cars that come back and forth is taken care of by the applicant.
The only reason I question that, Charlie, is it's good enough for the county to drive on, all our heavy trucks loaded. It's good enough for our rental, which is to the south even further of us, right next, for them to drive on with their trucks full and loaded. And they have ten-wheelers that go in there all the, or they have tractor-trailers that go in there to deliver their, well, anyway, the things that they put on their yards that they build. So they're heavy loads. And these folks will have none of that. If, I mean, they might have a boat or a trailer.
Yeah, these would be light loads.
Which would be, you know, a small portion of the weight. All right.
You got it. When it comes to a rezone, there's quite a bit of flexibility and leverage that the county has in offering that rezone. It's not like a conditional use permit where you have to just stick to what's mitigating the facts of the case. I mean, just the fact that you could say, no, it's not the right time or not the right place, could put you in a position to say, you know, we need a road to be reconstructed. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do. It's an option. I think what the engineers are looking for is probably already there. And I think they think that too. I mean, you've got all that heavy truck traffic. You're going to get some pretty good compaction down there. But if it's set on native dirt, if it's just asphalt set on native dirt that just happened to hold up for over a period of time, I think they want to know that. I think that's their concern. Okay. Wastewater disposal, we already discussed that. So no gray or black water dumping on the site and have a sign posted that says, there's another location where you can dump your RV effluent. Let's see, signage. Talked about watercraft decontamination if it's needed. Hopefully it is never needed. Just a provision in the development agreement that would say we don't want it to have any effect on drinking water and to work with Eden Waterworks on making sure that occurs. We discussed drainage facilities. Fire protection. I suspect the fire chief's going to want to see fire sprinklers in each of these commercial buildings. It could potentially pose a problem if you see any of these go up in flames and then you're right in that Riparian Corridor where you have another pretty thickly wooded area. One thing that we've suggested getting documented in development agreement is that if a hydrant doesn't already exist in the area, and according to our maps, I don't see one that comes down this far on Clark Lane, that the applicant be asked to install that hydrant to help fight fires that might occur because of the new facility there.
Would you think it'd be appropriate for the county and the county's Leese to participate in that since the odds of them needing it are probably much higher than the odds of these folks needing it?
Absolutely. So side obscuring berm or fence, we already chatted about that. Eight-foot berm or fence there. Let's see, Riparian, excuse me, Riparian Corridor tree line protection. So what we've asked them to do is just provide photo inventory of what's onsite, just to say, these are the trees that are here. We're not going to tear any of these down. So we could just go and do a quick inspection once they're all done, just to verify that that's happened, that they kept the trees as they could, or as best they could, excuse me. We're requesting that no outdoor storage be permitted and that that be in the development agreement. Solid waste and refuse. We don't have a specific solid waste plan from the developer. We'd suggest just putting a development agreement that says they have at least a six-yard or larger dumpster onsite. You know how those facilities can look every once in a while when someone's looking to do a quick move or whatever and they don't have enough room in the truck and they've got an old mattress? We just want to make sure it goes somewhere and not just dumped on the neighbor's property or whatever. Here's one that was a little controversial, excuse me, with one or two planning commissioners, art and culture contribution. So one thing that could happen, if you guys are comfortable doing so, is the applicant can reach out to Ogden Valley Starry Nights. They, Ogden Valley Starry Nights is trying to focus on agricultural buildings that have visual impact in the community and help essentially accentuate them or emphasize them by putting a mural on the side. And you guys have all seen that as you've driven through the valley, these beautiful murals. So we asked the applicant if they'd be willing to do so on some of their more open and exposed building facades, and they said they'd be more than happy to. I think we want to write that if we do, if you guys are comfortable writing into the development agreement with a loose. with a loose enough language that we're strongly encouraging it occurs as opposed to mandating it occurs because we just don't have control over the Starry Nights group there. Truck corridor preservation, architectural standards. So my suggestion is we take some of the images that we, that you saw here, if not others, that we can work out with the applicant and just kind of see how they're going to do the trim and just make sure it actually has a decent appearance from the outside looking in. And put that in the development agreement. And that is, those are the standards that I would suggest we consider in that development agreement. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Charlie.
Questions for Charlie Commissioners?
I have a question, Mr. Ewer. What, what portion of the property, again, how many acres are you proposing to go into a change?
The total acreage is a little over 15 if you're looking at, so.
I'm looking at GeoGizmo, it says 14.15.
So that's 14.15 if you're taking just the applicant, so you're looking at the map on your screen right now.
And the other house.
And the two other houses, right. So you're probably.
Two houses.
There are two houses, yep. Both, I want to say right around an acre, a little under an acre, actually.
One's 0.99 and the other one is, is about the same, 1.09. And then the other, the third one looks like it has an easement going back to that big parcel of 14.
Yep. There is, there is something there. And that was actually part of a subdivision that occurred a few years back. It was actually that property was divided off from this larger parcel that we're talking about. And seemed like there was a maintenance of some kind of an easement there. Yeah, if you were there on site, in fact, the, the property that you're looking at that looks like it has that easement or that accessway, that is actually kind of up on a shelf. You get the school property, it steps down just a little bit. You have that property and it steps down a little bit more and you've got the next two residential facilities that are there.
Another question for you, Charlie. Tell me about, you know, you've got that river or that waterway, whatever you want to call it back there. You talked about a trail that could basically connect the parks. Share with me again, I'm not with you as it relates to that active transportation moving over to what I'd call the Maverick or the Store. That, there's a lot of commercial, commercialization there. Valley Junction Drive and over in there, it looks like that that's kind of a new Eden town. Just help me understand what an active transportation again looks like on your map that's there. Were you, were just your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so something that's really important, probably don't have to speak too much to it, is interconnectivity, both for vehicles and for pedestrians, especially if you're trying to build a pedestrian oriented village center. So here you've got Highway 162, sorry, this mouse doesn't like to work well, coming back and forth. You've already got a pedestrian facility there, 10-foot wide-ish asphalt pedestrian facility that runs adjacent to that. Down here on the corner, this is the Maverick. You've got a pedestrian facility that runs on 158 all the way up to Wolf Creek and all the way down to the North Arm Trailhead at the, at the reservoir. Long-term plan would be to pick up from North Arm Trailhead, go down all the way around the reservoir and connect down the other side of the reservoir to the Snow Basin property that we already talked about. So that would be the completion of the Pineview Loop pathway. What we would see here, get this mouse over here, is the possibility of preservation of a trail corridor that runs essentially on, it doesn't matter which side, as long as we've got access to it, on either side of this river corridor and runs along the river. There is, this is the Wolf Creek inlet here, where the confluence for Wolf Creek is essentially right here in this area. That, that that trail could essentially run up in the Wolf Creek area and then make a connection back to 162. It could run up the actual river on the east-west side and then make a connection back to 162. Either way, it connects back to where there is an existing pedestrian facility.
Thanks, Mr. Ewer. Will you take that trail though, from where you are up there? I understand that part.
Okay.
That's not my question. I'm sorry, let's go south, let's go through the county, the county shed property or go south.
Okay, so from there.
Take your little mouse and draw that on that same thing. You're, just your thoughts. This, these will be yours, not the county adopted thoughts. These are your thoughts.
I appreciate that. If you were to take a trail corridor south, you'd be working with different landowners for sure. But eventually you could get down to North Arm Trail with never setting foot on the trail system that runs adjacent to the highway. So you'd essentially have a river walk that goes from North Arm all the way up that, the North Fork River that then connects you all the way up into River Drive. And potentially, if we had willing participants and landowners who wanted to work with us, we could continue to go up River Drive. Or, excuse me, just the river instead of going up with River Drive, having some kind of an Ogden River Parkway type of trail facility.
And this, and this applicant is a willing participant currently?
For, for his portion currently, yeah. And it just kind of a trade-off, I think, wanting to sweeten the deal and, and help the county commission come to a decision that helps him while he's helping the county.
Chair Forrester, those are, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
So Charlie, I have a couple.
Sure.
So first off, your recommendation would be to table this until date certain?
Yeah, if, if you guys are comfortable with a positive, with an approval essentially of a rezone in a development agreement, I would suggest tabling it for not less than two weeks. Give myself and the applicant enough time to get through and dot the i's, cross the t's and make sure you guys are comfortable with how we've done so before making a final decision on the rezone. We could alternatively, I mean, if you want to table it for another reason, for example, we've got a lot of stuff going on in this area. We've got the village area for Old Town Eden, and then we have Newtown Eden, which is this area that we're going to be working on over the next year or so. And we just don't know exactly how that's all going to flesh out when we're working with the public. So there's always a possibility to, to either table to that time to figure out how exactly this is going to appear in that context. Or you can deny. You could deny just saying it doesn't fit, or you could deny saying we're not quite ready for it, come back in a year and ask the same question.
Okay, so let's talk about Newtown Eden.
Okay.
Does this fit in with the plan for Newtown Eden? Are you that far along that you can answer that?
We're not that far along. And so when we looked at the general plan, there are, I mean, there are a number of points from the general plan I could probably pick at and say, this isn't the right area for this. There are other points in the general plan I could pick at and have really uphold and support this idea. So it really kind of comes down to the eye of the beholder. If we had a Newtown Eden plan ready right here, right now, we would have a much better answer for you.
Okay, and do you anticipate that Newtown Eden plan to be done by the end of the year or?
No, I do anticipate having Old Town Eden done by the end of the year. Or at least before you guys for final decision-making. Newtown will follow on the heels of that. Old Town will set up the framework for how Newtown will work. So I'm hoping Newtown will go a lot faster than the last year and a half that Old Town has been.
Got it. Okay, so my next question deals with storage unit locations. And several months ago, as you well know, I asked the, I asked your department, Rick's department, to take a look at our regulations on storage units, where they're located. Obviously, I would agree, we've had issues that, we have a number, especially going into Huntsville, of storage units that we've had problems with because of the types of vehicles, boats, et cetera, they left out in the open. To look at getting the storage units, the new storage units that we were approved, off of the gateways, which I think makes sense from both, both a business standpoint and also a visual standpoint. Where are we on revision of that ordinance to really say, this is where storage units should go? I happen to be in support of having storage units off gateways, off our main highways because it limits business enterprises that, especially with what we have now without development agreements, can harm the neighbors as well.
Agreed. So where we are right now, we've run several different work sessions with both planning commissions and we've got some really good direction from them. They like the idea of requiring storage units to be off of those main streets. The, the idea that we're running with right now, unless you guys give us some course correction right now, is that storage units still could be located there, but the visual effects of them need to be mitigated. So storefront or street front, retail or residential, if you guys are comfortable with residential at the point that we go to those approvals, would be up front. And then if they wanted to do storage, that would be around back. Creating buildings that are convertible, perhaps. One of the ideas that we're floating around is possibility of doing a storefront, but still allowing storage to be inside of that as long as that storefront has some kind of a display, whether it be an artistic display or something to help attract a passerby in a, in a resident, or excuse me, in a, in a pedestrian oriented community so that they're not just walking by just a drywall to, to kind of look at something and say, okay, we could see this as a commercial area, even though maybe the owner of that building doesn't have a market yet to get a tenant in there for retail. Maybe they can continue to use that for storage. Just to make sure that the aesthetics essentially shows that of a pedestrian oriented commercial facility.
And I'm assuming those development agreements would address screening or visual, again, visual impact?
Yeah, actually, if we're doing this with the, the ordinance that we're currently rewriting, it wouldn't even require a development agreement. It would just be, this is how you do it.
Got it.
Period.
Okay, additional questions? Thank you, Charlie.
You bet.
Seeing none? Let's go to the public for comments. Anybody in the chamber that would like to come up and address this issue, please come forward. We'd appreciate your comments. If you just give us your name.
Kimber McCafferty. I am the previous owner of the property in question. I have lived there 56 years. I can tell you that the road, the, the Weber County shop is on, was not put on original dirt. They hauled in road base, they compacted it. There was a bridge that was on the family farm. They removed that because it would not support the weight of the trucks. If they were worried about the weight of the trucks on a bridge, I'm sure they accounted for it in the road. There is a hydrant that is right outside the county shop gate. And to do a visual of what trees are there does not make sense to me because we had a windstorm a few months back that in a split of a second, three trees were down next to my house. Commissioner Forrester, I liked your comments on free enterprise. I, as a seller, should have free enterprise that I can sell my property. The buyers should have free enterprise on developing the property. Nobody wanted to buy my home as it is because you look out at the county shop, continuous dust, continuous trucks. I could not get the maximum value out of my house. The only way I could get maximum value is to sell it to someone who wanted to develop it. So I went into survivor mode and I went into, I wanted to prosper if I am going to sell property that has been in my family since it was homesteaded in the 1800s. I think it, I think it's really easy for a planning commission to sit down and make all these grand designs on how they want their village and how it should look and what should be there. But the problem they aren't looking at is they don't own the property. How are you going, why are they dictating what happens on property that I own and I don't agree with on their plan? I see a problem with the way that things are being planned because the opening, the open spaces in the valley are owned by people that have been there for generations. I am six generations to live on in Eden. I am the fourth born and raised. And there are other families out there all over the valley that have weathered the storms. Their people have, have gone through tragedy and stayed there and preserved the land. But now people that have come and lived less than 10 years in the valley are storming your doors and saying, no, no, don't let them do that. That's not what we want. But these, but these people have the only open spaces, the only places to develop left in the valley. And people who own homes and live in developments that someone at some point had to give up their family, family home, family homestead, family farm so that they could be there. But yet nobody, they don't want anybody else to be able to do that because they're there. Now nobody else can come, just me. That's their thinking and it's not right. And it, and it stifles what the people who have lived their generation can do or not do with their land. I appreciate you being able to hold these meetings where we can voice our opinions because that is the American way. But we've got to do it with logic and not emotion. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Next.
I'm Pat McCafferty, I'm Kim's husband. I, I am the landowner. I am, I'm pretty fed up with the politics that has gone on with my land. This is not just something that started back with the gravel pit. I started four years ago. I was the one that obtained the permit through the state and the feds to get into that river and dig. Because when I come to the county and asked for your help, when the river was washing close to my home, you guys told me basically pound eggs. It's not your concern, it's not your worry. Well, it was my worry at the time, it still is my worry. So you guys continue in the public to tell me how and what I'm supposed to do with my land when she already stated that it was their land before any of you was ever in that valley. And now the other people that continue to complain or dictate what I'm supposed to do with my land? It's not your land, it's my land. I sit here and I look at this map. I look at the health issues that you guys on your property that is continually growing because your valley is continually growing, that the impact of my wife's health is impacting both of us, not only inside my house, but outside my house. I can't continue to keep my house clean of dust because your road piles don't have proper watering systems that you guys don't meet the Clean Air Act on your own property. You might want to come and do some studies. Just today, I sat and I watched your dump truck or your loader pick up dust and dump it into a truck that that continues to go on daily and has ever since you guys continued to grow. You guys leased the property next to you. You guys are responsible for what they do over there under your own laws, which they don't comply. I sat, I have pictures and pictures of what goes on in your county shop as far as contaminants. I have a picture of a water drum or a paint drum that had blown over and rolled down into a water. I have pictures of all of your storage paint that is on the outside of your building that is not in a containment pond. But yet you guys want to sit here and complain or dictate how everything's going on. Over in your other part of your village of the CB2, you allow a snowcat operation that goes on, that you just give a permission to have his snow village up high by Powder Mountain. Well, those snowcats are being repaired over on a concrete pad that is not contained for oil. I have pictures and I have pictures of a lot of things that continually goes on. You have 24 storage drains that go from that school down Clark Lane and dump straight into the North Fork River that has batteries, plastics, human feces parts. I have all these pictures. These are the things that continually go on behind your back that people in the valley want to sit and complain about that don't want to happen, that is happening. Not only is that a drain, but you've got one that goes down past the snowcats that continually goes to the North Fork River without a containment pond on either one of them. When the old folks home was built, you made them put a containment pond for the parking, not for the storage drains around it, only for the parking. I think this is the best thing that could happen in that area. Not only in the first meeting when my property was vandalized because of the rioting basically before the. before the meeting, which I have broken windows from that rioting. I still believe this is the best thing that could happen to this property, the lowest impact. Y'all sat here and said the noise would hurt the school and they couldn't learn. Well, there is no noise with storage sheds. There is no chemicals. There is no dust. I'm tired of living the industrial life that you have put upon us. That was a nice road at one time. It's not a nice road. I live the industrial life. I'm ready to retire. I have over 20 years of service. I'm ready to retire and move to a beautiful place in the valley that I can say, man, what a beautiful valley. But instead, I'm being taxed at the same rate on my property and I look at the pit hole of the valley. To bring your corridor down there, why would you want to bring kids down this road? When you, this is the only road in Weaver County that you can allow heavy loads day and night, 24 hours a day. You know what it's like to be beep, 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 bang, 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 4:00 in the morning? I'm tired. And it's gotten worse. As the valley grows, it's gonna grow and it's gonna get worse. What a better place for somebody to put a business, which is growth, what you talked about earlier and all these mission statements that I sit and read. Help me help you because otherwise, if this property stays mine, none of this will happen. I won't allow any of it. I'm sorry, I feel that way, but I'm tired. And I've worked hard for this government and I'm ready to retire and look at the same life that you all look at. A nice life. I'm a stressful man. I work on that 16th. That's not only here but abroad. I'm ready to retire and not be such a harsh person because your road and your facility across the street has made me a very bitter person and I'm tired. I thank you for your time and listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. One correction that I would make a note of is that I've actually been in the valley for the better part of 68 years. I'm very familiar with your wife's father and I know that goes back. I've spent a considerable amount of time in that valley, in your area, prior to that being zoned commercial manufacturing. So just for the record.
I've heard all the stories and I've watched your videos and how you guys approve these things. And I listened to your story about it back in the olden days with your grandpa and all that up there. And you know what? My wife has those stories too.
I know. I appreciate that. She's actually expressed those to me. No, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I thank you all for taking the time to listen to her.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Cherry, you've got some comments, I think, on the Zoom.
We'd go to Stacy. Do you want to put those comments through on the Zoom?
Shelley Hallissey.
Or Shelley? Whoever's running the meeting?
I'll have Colby Hoker go first.
Shelley, I'm gonna let you let the people know when they're up. Go ahead. Again, please introduce yourself. Again, I'd ask that comments be limited to three minutes.
My name's Cody Hoker. I'm the applicant. I want to start by thanking, it sounds like we've got some feedback issues. Don't believe that's on my. Sorry about that. Is that better?
That's better.
As the applicant, I want first to thank all the members that have allowed us to participate. Charlie's been great to work with. We have, I feel a very good working relationship with the county and it's been a pleasure for me to participate in it. The feeling on the part of us as the applicants is that we have been willing to give, we're willing to give the bike path, we're willing to do the hydrant, we're willing to do the trees. But at some point, we are desirous for equal protection under the law and we treat it the same as our neighbors. One point that wasn't brought up is directly adjacent to the county yard is storage, where they do allow outdoor storage. And all the concerns that have been expressed about our project seem to fail to see that right across the street from us, the exact thing we're proposing. Well, we're proposing superior product, but an inferior product is already existing. So from that regard, I think it becomes very challenging for those that request that the county commissioners would deny this simply because it would expose the county commission to certainly claims of unequal protection, just the same as would requiring us to make improvements along Clark Lane that weren't required of those who have previously been party to rezones and businesses going in. As alluded to by the commissioner as well, the majority of the traffic onto that road isn't going to be a consequence of our development but of existing development. And to ask us to pay for beyond what is reasonable certainly is government overreach in my opinion. And I don't believe that just because we're asking for a rezone that that in any way sanctions or allows in our society for the government to extort things that are beyond what would be fair of our neighbors and expected of everybody. So one, I ask that we add one more option that Charlie admitted is that you approve this. We started this process a year and a half ago. We've been very patient. We've done everything the county's asked. We've paid for every study the county wanted before we could do this. The people who would be most impacted would be me not having development agreement because as Charlie explained, CV2 doesn't allow for what we're proposing to do absent a development agreement. So I would request that you approve the rezone to CV2 and place the burden of a development agreement upon the person who most benefits by getting it in place, and that's me, because I can't do my project without the CV2. To delay me and put it off more weeks and allow for future delays, you know, I don't see the benefit to that. I don't see what the county's gonna learn between now and two weeks from now. It's gonna change all the informations before them. And I kindly ask that you approve it and leave the onus of development agreement between Charlie and I. We're gonna work that out because the county's not gonna demand what the county can't demand. And we're gonna come to an agreement. But I respectfully request that you approve the rezone. We're willing to make it CV2 even though, again, that exposes me to having to put my faith in the county, but I'm willing to do that. We've been willing to work with county all along and we'll continue to work with them in good faith. But I don't consider tabling us to be in anyone's best interest and I'm the only one that's, as the applicant, damaged by having a CV2 without the development agreement. Because without the development agreement, I can't even do what I'm asking to do. So you can rezone it, but I'm still left without the ability to do what I want to do. So I'd ask that you approve it. And I hope we've met all the concerns that have been raised. And for me, I just want to thank you. I feel that through the process, I've hopefully become better at what I'm trying to do and working with you and understanding what the concerns are and trying to find ways to address those. And I do believe we've come up with what's the best product ultimately. I think you might be getting a little bit far down the road when you start telling people what color they have to make their buildings and you didn't specify what type of trees, but I think at some point you leave it to people to use their own intellect and put some guardrails on. But beyond that, I think we're capable of picking a good color scheme. But if you insist on picking our colors, we'll acquiesce to that as well. But I'd like you to approve this, please, and I have no further comments unless there's questions for me directly.
Thank you, Cody. Any questions, commissioners? Seeing none, let's go to the Wright family, I think, is next. Are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. I had a couple of questions, comments, both for Charles, I guess for Cody, and then for you guys as the county commissioners. First of all, this was directed at Charles. I was wondering how he felt that an MV1 zone was acceptable because based on his 2014 Ogden Valley Maximum Zoning Density Study, he said that Ogden Valley cannot support an MV1 zone, but we can support 215 CV2 zones. So did he, does he not agree with his study from 2014? Have things changed enough from 2014 that that information's out of date? Or is now he working privately so he's not supporting what he planned for the county back in 2014?
I'm gonna ask Charlie to get back to you on that question. Go ahead. We don't have time for him to answer that right now, but I ask him to get, as we go offline.
That's a thought I'd like you guys to consider as you're talking about this rezone. Also, the junior high is right there backing up onto the property. So what zone is the junior high in and can the rezone happen based on the zoning of the junior high? I know certain things are and are not allowed by schools, so where the property's a butt, that's something to take into consideration as well. Also, I understand that Cody is frustrated because it is hard to be told what you can and can't do as a homeowner based on things I want to do on my property. I have to come to the county too. But we have spent a lot of time and money and effort on the Ogden Valley general plan. And again, if the commissioners and independents are not going to pay attention to that, why did we spend the time and money and effort on the general plan? Last of all, I understand that it's frustrating that you can't do what you want with the property, but you bought the property knowing it was an AB3 zone. It's an agricultural area. So it is taking more time than you'd like, but that's because you bought it knowing it was agricultural. So again, I think it's fair for the county commissioners to look at all the issues, look at all the information and all the studies that they have and use those for best case scenarios. Because like me, a lot of people who have moved up here recently, we plan on staying here for the next 30, 40, 50 years. And I'm new, but my husband's been here for forever and his parents before him. But I understand that, you know, I mean, just because I'm new doesn't mean I get to do whatever I want, but I want to look to the future because this is somewhere I want my kids and family to want to live in 30, 40, 50 years as well. So I would ask that those things be considered as you're making your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna make one correction. I would firmly believe that the Clark family didn't buy that property in AB3. In fact, like a lot of people in the valley, the property was originally zoned agricultural A1, which allowed one acre development. Sometime in the past, the county commission made the decision to remove the requirement from one acre to three acres. So at that point in time, it was an AB3. And I know that they were in ownership when that happened, just like a number of other people in Ogden Valley. So who's next?
Diana, I got it right on your text there.
Go ahead. Is it Tiana?
Yes, sir. My name is Tiana Hikowski.
Go ahead.
I am a resident of the valley. I live off Wolf Creek, excuse me, Wolf Ridge Circle, up by Wolf Creek. I sent an email yesterday, so I do want to thank Commissioner Harvey for the response. Thank you for that. The couple of things that I wanted to bring up is that if we are going to rezone, I understand for the residents that live down there, it's problematic because of the surroundings that you're in. So it may be beneficial for us to rezone, but to not allow a rezone that would put the batch plant as a possibility in the future. I believe that a storage facility, although it is needed in the valley, I think we've already addressed that we need to have accommodations and lodging in the valley more so than storage units. We are bringing up another issue of nightly rentals. So if we are gonna do CV3, I think it's, or rather, CV2, it also puts bed and breakfast or hotel in that area. So that would give us the opportunity to have a scenic view and allow for a hotel, a boutique hotel, something like down in Huntsville, to go up down there as well. I just think that we need to give the best opportunity for not only the landowners that have the residences down there, but we want to keep something pristine for the valley. And you know what? If we're gonna have tourism down there, you might want to clean up that storage area that the county has for all their stuff because we don't want our tourists seeing that as well. Those are just my thoughts. I appreciate your listening to them and then coming to a conclusion for us all.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Next. I don't see. Shelley, do you have any other comments?
Colby would, Cody would like to respond to Ms. Francis.
Okay, we'll give you 60 seconds, Cody. Go ahead.
I would love to put a hotel down there. Would love to put a lot of things. We ran into the water district expressing concerns that with water treatment, without a water treatment facility in the county, you're not able to do high density, you're not able to do a lot of these grandiose ideas. We explored all those options. I don't want to think we settled on this without exploring all the options. And I also appreciate Ms. Wright. I'm not frustrated with the process. I just believe the county has everything before them and no new information will become available from which to make a determination. That's all. But we arrived at this with the blessing and sanction with the wellhead over there. They don't want a bunch of leach field activity from a lot of residents in that area. So that's why it was welcomed by the water district over residential.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments, members of the public? Kirk Langford? Kirk, go ahead.
Kirk Langford and then Lee Schussman.
Go ahead, Kirk.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your allowing me to make a quick comment. I, like Gage, have spent a lot of my life up here, almost all of it. The property just to the south of where we're talking about, that whole commercial area in there, including the storage unit, I mean, excuse me, the storage in the county shop was part of my family's, my aunt and uncle's property. And I'm very familiar with that whole area, growing up from the time I was five years old. And I really sympathize with the landowner who had lived across the street from pretty much unregulated industrial enterprise. It's not a pleasant thing. But just one quick clarification too. I think the vote for the planning commission was four to three, not three to two. I think you had a wait and see attitude. And I think the primary drive for not allowing the rezone was to see if there might be a better use for this land, not to stop development down there, but to see if there's a better development use for that and going forward and to see how something could change from that new, new commercial area and transition up the river and maybe with even further continuation up to the Middle Fork Bridge. So I suggest that before we make a decision with unintended consequences to rezone and take all other future development options off the table, that we go back and take the time and figure out what we're gonna do with that commercial property behind Maverick and whether that could tie or not tie up the river, including, is that a location that the county could put a packaged sewer plant that would be disguised and hidden as an agriculture building, for example, that could tie into some kind of walking commercial development up there? Some of these new package plants, you put the waste in, you package some of the solids and the water can be released without even having holding ponds. And that river's dry right now. Putting some water back into that river at some point in time could be a good idea. So I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be development here. I'm suggesting that a rezone is a big thing and having some more information, and I respectfully kind of disagree with Colby, I think we don't really know what other options we could be doing up there and how we could extend the commercial area or not. Maybe it is the best use for storage units at some point in time. And I'd like to just address one thing too, you know, we all have property rights we want to have protected. If we all just did anything we wanted to do with our property without any planning and zoning, maybe that's what we should do in the valley. And it can just be, you know, like Leighton and Davis County or Riverdale or anywhere else. But that isn't the case. The existing property owners have The existing property owners have property rights too. And when somebody asks for a rezone and asks to do something on their property, certainly it should be taken into consideration. But what they do has a lot of impact on everybody else. And these storage units will have 97 people who rent them out that will be happy. But what is this rezone contributing to all the rest of the residents in Ogden Valley? Maybe that's the maximum use to rezone is just the storage units. But I think there's more there and I think it takes some consideration. And I don't think it's unreasonable to think about what we're going to do. This is a significant area. This is the year 2020. And it would sure be nice to do something that's compatible with the river and more compatible with the whole community and still give these property owners their property rights. Might be a better off situation for them actually, when, when you look into it a little deeper. Thank you.
Thanks Kirk. Appreciate your comments. Next, Lee Schussman? Lee, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
My name is Lee Schussman, and I would like to address just one very specific aspect of this whole operation. And that is that I would like you to very carefully consider and not at this time, rezone this whole area to MV1. MV1, as you're well aware, has many uses that I don't think are consistent with what we want this area to be and would further damage those people who live there. I think Chairman Frohre, you were at the meeting at Snowcrest Junior High, and there were hundreds of individuals and does there protesting the use of, for example, a cement plant. And many objections that were raised in that meeting are still legitimate and applicable to this area, I think. But I'd like to emphasize one problem about which I have some special expertise. And that is expertise, that's the health and safety issues of allowing such a thing as a cement plant next to a school. If we zone this MV1, and I'm assuming that what Charlie Ewart and Mr. Holker have been talking about is a specific four acres on which there's going to be a storage site. And I don't have an expertise in whether or not that's the best use of that area. But I do have concern that I think what we're considering is rezoning the whole area, 15 acres. And my two concerns about having a polluting activity of any kind next to a school are based on two bits of information. The first bit is that I'm part of a group called PurpleAir.com, and we have online air pollution monitors in many places in the Ogden Valley. We're finding three things with respect to air pollution. One, the air pollution in our valley is increasing. That's not a secret. Two, the air pollution in our valley is often worse than we might think it is from just looking at it and breathing our air. I'm looking out my back window right now. It looks pristine and beautiful. All the smoke is blown away from the last few days, but my monitor is showing orange. So there's often more pollution here than we think. The third pollution point is that the air pollution is often localized. So one of our monitors in, say, Durfee Creek might show a red level of pollution, while at the same time, a few miles away in Liberty, it's orange or even green. These local pockets of pollution will often stay localized even for days or weeks until they're dispersed by wind. So to, to poorly paraphrase the Las Vegas motto, what happens in Eden stays in Eden. So we know that that air pollution from any kind of a polluting activity in that little pocket, which is adjacent to the junior high, will indeed stay there. And I won't quote all the evidence. I did send an email to the commissioners with the data from the Utah Physicians Report on Air Pollution and Health Research in 2018. Their data shows that if we put a polluting industry next to a school, children with asthma will be worse. There's no doubt. There will be more bouts of ear infection. And I can quote all of those studies, but won't do that now. And a large study done right here in Utah showed that 100,000 people, when they were exposed under Wash Ash Front, and this is the important part, I think, to short-term exposure lasting only a few days, showed increase in serious respiratory infections. So I, I think as we struggle through COVID-19 to help keep all of us safe, it would be unconscionable to voluntarily expose our children and their families and the teachers and the staff and the neighbors to any kind of industry that we know could be a change.
Okay.
And so I urge you not to change voting to MV1, because that runs with the property for perpetuity and encloses a much bigger area than the small.
Lee, you need to, you need to conclude your remarks. We understand, we got, we received your point. We understand it. So thank you very much. Who's next? Anybody in line? Shelley?
No one else that I can see, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Charlie, do you have any concluding remarks or you done? I'm going to let you make the final remarks. We're not going to receive any more Zoom or public comments from this point on. Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to, to make sure it's clear. There are additional comments in your inbox. Another one of the reasons why I would suggest waiting to another meeting, just to make sure you can digest each of those items. Still, they were still coming in as I came in today. And I've been out of the office the last couple of days, so I haven't been able to get to all of them. One, one question, I've got, I've got three items that I think were generally directed in my direction. And if you need clarification on any more of them, let me know. One question was about the max density study, which suggested that the valley can't support any more manufacturing. I just breezed through that 2014 report, which I did author. I didn't see exactly where that is, but if the commenter is willing to shoot me over an email, I'm happy to go through and figure out what exactly that context was. The max density study was a study to figure out how much the existing zoning could fit in terms of residential rooftops. Where manufacturing doesn't allow residential rooftops, I'm struggling to figure out the context, but I'm happy to work with her to kind of help work through that. And I think one of the questions or one of the statements she made, made it seem like maybe I work for the applicant. I work for the county. I just want to make sure that was clear. Still working here. As far as lodging and accommodations go, I think the applicant actually answered that question. That was one of the first things they came and asked. We know that we've got a challenge when it comes to density in the Ogden Valley. We've got a challenge when it comes to knowing exactly how to facilitate that in a way that the public is comfortable with. Our general plan currently talks about transferable development rights. All the studies that I've read and all the different reports and different plans across the nation that I've tried to come across when it comes to TDRs doesn't fit really well in the Ogden Valley. But it's something that we are moving towards, so we can create that tool. And so that might come down the pipeline in the future. It's not going to work at all without sewer system. And a question by Mr. Schussman, very good observation on the 15 acres. That actually, the fact that the applicant has acquired or is acquiring from the owner, the 15 acre parcel is coincidental with the 15 acres being rezoned. The actual, the rezone for the applicant's property is what you see, it's what you saw in the presentation. It's the red polygon there, only on the east side of the river. And that line is going to follow essentially the 100-foot setback for that high watermark. So it's four and a half acres of the applicant's property. The other acreage in that 15 or so acres is the county property and the residential property adjacent. 100% of that red polygon, commissioners, would be covered by the development agreement. Development agreement says you can only do this use storage units and you can only do it these ways if you were to approve it and if you were to accept that development agreement. The parcel or the rest of the parcel on the other side of the river stays in the AV3 zone and could potentially be developed under the AV3 zone if the applicant chooses to do so. My understanding is applicant's probably going to run through a subdivision process to split out the storage units from the land that's on the other side and work with what's on the other side at a later time, probably most likely residential uses.
So just to be clear, Charlie, out of the 15 acres, we've got approximately four acres that would be impacted by the rezone application. And so it would be very possible in the future for those that said, let's look at other options to come in for the remaining 11 acres, plus or minus, to achieve what they would like to achieve.
Correct. Of the, of the applicant's property.
The applicant's.
You've got the two residential and the county property as well. As far as whether or not you go with the manufacturing zone or the commercial zone, I can understand why the public would be a little bit resistant to the manufacturing zone. Just the word manufacturing is a challenge. If you read through the staff reports that are open for the planning commission, I mean, it kind of brings up ideas of billowing smokestacks. If you read through your manufacturing zone for the Ogden Valley, not for out west, not the M1, 2, or 3 out west, but the MV1 zone, the Ogden Valley, it's actually a really tame version of manufacturing. There's a couple of things in there, including cement batching, or excuse me, concrete batching, that would be of concern. And it would be the reason why I would recommend a development agreement that doesn't allow any of those other uses, just the use that the applicant is requesting. If you don't want to go with MV1, totally understand. And we would actually look for your guidance on this when we, so we can come back with a complete development agreement for that, the execution of that rezone. Let us know which direction you want to go, MV1 or CB1 for the applicant's property. And then I'm assuming for the county property, you'd be comfortable with the MV1 if you do anything at all.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate that. Commissioners, I would look for a motion to, unless there's additional questions for Charlie or staff, I'd look for a motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene as a public meeting.
I'd make that motion. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now out of our public hearing and back into a public meeting. It's time to take action on our public hearing. Comments and/or motions? I'm open to either.
Go ahead.
You sure?
Oh, he does this all, he always, he always does that to me.
Commissioner Harvey, I knew you wanted to make a motion.
Well, yeah, but I wanted to hear what Commissioner Jenkins had to say.
Well, all I was going to say.
He can speak to your motion.
Yeah.
That's not illegal.
I like what I've heard here today. I like the, the request to rezone. If I had to live in that area where these folks live, I'd want to live next to a well-kept storage facility during the week. There's very little traffic. Weekends, the traffic will go up, but it's generally quiet traffic. It's people hauling material, personal things in and out of their storage unit. It's occasionally a trailer that they might want to store or a boat. But there's no backup bells going off. There's no things such as that. I absolutely agree that this goes with the area. I think it goes with the area wonderful, especially if you give them some suggestions to make it look like a farm area. They can do that. This is, it's not going to cost a lot extra to do those kinds of things. And I just really like it. I think this is going to change the area in a very positive way. And so if you're looking for a motion, I'd make a motion that we approve a, a rezone to a CB2 with, with a development agreement.
Okay, we have a motion.
What I'm thinking may be the same, but I'm not going to second it this time, Mr. Chair, because I need to probably ask a couple more questions or have a little more dialogue.
Okay. So would you like to make another motion or?
Well, I like a lot of the stuff that was presented here today too. I, I like supporting the planning commission. They got a little more into the weeds on this subject than I think we've heard today. And I still have questions, even based on the presentation made today by our planning department, or why they would have voted 3-2. We did ask the petitioner to go back and get another vote from the planning commission. That was not done. To the comments made in person, ma'am, I appreciated your comments very much. We could have ended there, and I, I think I'd have probably been a little closer to what Commissioner Jenkins said. But it went on and, and I'll stop there. I am absolutely not in favor of a gravel pit next to a school. I'm not in favor of a gravel operation or anything like that that would have, what I think would not be a positive impact to that water source or that river, that water source there. I think that would be not good form on our side. Wouldn't be good planning. It wouldn't be good for us to do that. Storage is a lighter impact on there. So my, if, if I were to make a motion right now, I, but I also like the comments that Mr. Langford had to say. So I think I've addressed Mr. Schussman's comments. Mr. Langford and the other person that made some comments up there too, who had married into a longtime family. I appreciated, appreciated there. Mr. Langford said, you know, maybe we should look at that. So that's, I'm kind of looking at that. I'm looking at the planning commission's decision. So if I might make either a similar or a substitute motion, Mr. Chair?
Still open for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve a CB2 with time certain, but to give you till September 22nd. The reason for that is, is just in looking at calendars for us, that's going to be a day where I think we'll hear still more talk on this. But that would be my recommendation. And I think where it's off the bluff there, of the hill, the school, well, you probably couldn't ask for a better use. You know, if you're looking for weekend traffic, you know, the only, I only went to reform school on the weekend. I didn't have to go to regular school during the week. So I'd probably be okay there. That'd be my, that'd be my motion.
All right. I'm confused on your motion. So you said approve on September 26th?
Well, I'd say.
In my opinion, I would prefer that we delayed this. We either approved it today under a CB2 or we delay the decision to time certain.
I would like to delay the decision till September 22nd.
Okay. So your motion is to place, to place this on a table situation, time certain, September 22nd?
Mr. Chair, that would be my motion.
Okay. Just so we're clear, does that make sense legal?
We're just tabling until September 22nd. During that time, you're going to be working on a development agreement?
Yeah. So, so the motion would be to, to table this motion, table this application until September 22nd.
And that's allowed? You've already satisfied the public hearing requirement?
Right. We've made the public hearing. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and second that motion with comments. And I agree a great deal with Commissioner Jenkins' comments that the county by zoning ordinance has created this issue for the petitioner. By virtue of the county itself having an MV1 use, even though it's not an MV1 zone across the street, dictates the potential use of that property. And for, for anyone to logically assume that we're going to put families on three acre sites across from a gravel pit makes very little sense to me. We're also looking at a four acre versus a 15 acre, which gives the potential for those people that would like alternative uses to come forward between now and, and 9/22 to either make an agreement with the owners and/or come up with other suggestions. And I firmly believe that, as I've directed in the past, that it's logical to have storage units off our main gateways in the community. And that's, that's why I support this along with the. And that's, that's why I support this, along with the idea that we have contiguous use for CV2 next to an MV1. I'd also recommend to our planning department that we address the county's parcel at that time. Again, as I've mentioned, just because we can doesn't mean we necessarily shouldn't. And I think that gives a false, can give a false impression as people look at the zoning map and see the county with an AV3 when it's used for an entirely different purpose. With that, you know, I'd also make the comment that the intent here is not to slow-cook the petitioners. I think that the intent would be to look forward to a CV2 zone, not an MV1. For those that, for those that have made comments on MV1, I, I think I can make the statement, that's not where we're headed.
Not, that's not where I'm headed.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Well, I agree with that.
Okay. So I'm going to make the comment publicly that those that are concerned about an MV1 can take that off their priority list, that I think the decision would be for storage units with the development agreement. And the reason that I seconded that is I would like to make sure that the petitioner has adequate time to look at the, really, the format of that development agreement. I wouldn't want to approve this and then have issues over the development agreement. So I would like planning, I would direct planning to come up with the basics of that development agreement, to make sure we have an understanding before this comes before the commission on 9/22. So that gives us time to, for the petitioner and planning to work through that development agreement. I just want to have this development agreement tied up, put a bow around it, make sure there's no, no issues after a zoning was to take place, so.
That's, that, thank you for explaining. That's exactly what I meant. That'd be great. I'm good with that.
You okay with that?
That's exactly it. Because then, then everybody's going to know, hey, there's not going to be a gravel pit up there. They're going to know exactly what they get. They're going to be able to see a trail. They're going to be able to see what the things look like, the, you know, I think this works, I think that could work out pretty good. At least that's where I am right now.
Okay. All right. And again, I would say for those people that have concerns, you know, I fully support private property rights, both for those that, for the petitioner and those that neighbor it, that have some influence. But at the end of the day, we have created zones that impact, and we talk about zoning and neighbors creating problems for adjoining landowners. We've done that as a county by allowing that zone. So it's time to, whether people like it or not, it's time to address that, address that issue. Additional comments before I place the motion?
I would just like to say one thing.
Go ahead.
Number one, based on Commissioner Harvey's comment, I want people to understand that I'm not necessarily in favor of a gravel pit. I felt like maybe I was thrown under the bus there a little bit, and I want to make sure that they understand that. It's okay. Secondly, I do feel like we're slow-cooking these guys a little bit. That's one of the reasons that I'm anxious. You know, some well-placed storage units up in the valley are quiet. Like I say, if I was living down in that area and had to live by something, I think I would welcome this because they're quiet, they're good neighbors, there's very little activity. And like I say, there's a little more on weekends than weekdays, but it's quiet activity. There's a vehicle pulls in and out. There's not backup bells going off all the time. And it's, it's really good. I would, if I lived there, I would welcome this. And personally, I think this will go along well with the planning. But Charlie, one thing I do want to say here is it's time that we get that, that plan finished up there. Boy, I'm anxious to get that going because there's a demand now for people to, they want to develop their properties, and there's a demand for other things. And so I'm anxious to get this done so that we don't feel like we're working against each other all the time, the planning commission and the, the Weber County Commission. I want it to be so we're working with each other. And, you know, I'm anxious to see that done. And so anyway, that's where I'm at.
Thank you very much. And, you know, for, again, for those that have suggested an alternative use, not that I disagree that there might be some alternative use, but right now, we have a willing seller and a willing buyer that have a proposed use that they've come to an agreement on. And for those that have other ideas, they have a timeframe to, to weigh in if they'd like to. But I think that the opportunity just to continue to lay these without putting forth a effort to purchase the property or do what the owners want is not fair to the property owner. So with that, commissioners, I'd call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Is that an aye, Commissioner Jenkins?
That was an aye, but it's only an aye for this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. We'll look forward to that on the 22nd of September, Charlie. And I would like to, as Commissioner Jenkins mentioned, at least have some type of rough idea, suggestions on what we're looking at with Newtown, even though it's conceptual. It appears that Newtown, at least with this request, is maybe moving a little faster than Old Town, so I think we should consider that. So with that, commissioners, Commissioner comments. Been a somewhat long meeting, but I think at the end of the day, productive. Always good to hear from the public. Commissioner Harvey?
Good meeting.
Mr. Jenkins?
I think it comes up.
Final motion?
Adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we adjourn. Thank you.